Okay, go ahead and call us in order. First item is the roll call.
Alderman Stanley's here. Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman West. Alderman Headley.
Here.
Alderman Arnold.
Here.
Alderman Palacek.
Here.
Uh, next item is invocation. I'll be led by Pastor James Pfizer with Mission Woods Community of Crete. And I'll be followed by a pledge allegiance to Alderman Headley.
Most holy and precious name, Lord. Thank you for this beautiful day and this incredible weather. Thank you for being with us and watching over us and for your guiding hand that's always there. We come to you this evening, Lord, asking for your presence, for your peace, for your clarity of mind. Please be with the leaders of this community. Please guide their hearts and their minds and help them to make the decisions that are best for this community and best for your, best for your children. God, thank you for all the time that they volunteer and that they offer and thank you for all of those in the community that step up and, and do your will. It's in Jesus' most holy and precious name we praise you and thank you in all things. Amen.
A pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item is approval, approval of the agenda. Okay, seeing no proclamations, we'll move on to citizens' participation. Uh, we ask the citizens to afford to the microphone and podium if they wish to address the board. And just so, if you are here to speak for or against the tips upon the agenda this evening, this would be the place to do it since this is a public hearing. You know, must address the board?
Hello, I'm Clayton Wardham with Ward Development. We're not opposing the tip or the creation of new sales tax income and new jobs by this project. We would like it to be known that we have significant interest in developing this project without any funds required by the city. We are confident that we can find a user that would not compete with other businesses in the city. We fully support the board's decision and the city's decision going forward. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the board this evening? All right, seeing none, move on. Uh, move on to the, uh, consent agenda.
Yeah, I move that we accept the consent agenda.
I have motion Alderman West to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Seeing no previous business or new business, move on to presentation. We have a presentation from Central Jackson County Fire Protection District on their no tax increase bond issue.
Thank you for the time to spend with you. My name's Eddie Sappel. I'm an assistant chief with Central Jackson County Fire. And I just wanted to take a few minutes to explain our, uh, bond issue that we've got on the ballot for next week. I've left cards at each of your spots and you can see on there, there are a number of large ticket items. It's a no tax increase bond for four million dollars. And the larger items that we're purchasing out of that, as you can see, two of our engines are right at fifteen years old. And the standard is typically ten to twelve years and then we rotate them into reserve. We try to make sure that our maintenance programs stay active and, uh, as current as possible on technology. So we get a little bit longer out of them. But the two that we're replacing have aged out now. We'll still rotate them into reserve for a few years, but we need to replace those. And those are about six hundred thousand apiece for the two engines. The, uh, heart monitors that we use on the ambulances, we need to purchase eight or nine of those. I, I don't remember, uh, how many of the trucks actually get those, but the ambulances all get them. And they're about twenty-five to thirty thousand apiece. So we're replacing all of those. They're over ten years old. And most of that is due to technology. We want to make sure that we have the best technology that we can for our patients and our citizens. The other big purchase is our bunker gear. We'll be switching out the, the clothes that we wear in firefighting. It's about three to four thousand dollars a set. And we have over a hundred line firefighters now that'll be getting new gear. Uh, and again, most of the stuff that we have is over ten years old. Um, through technology, it's gotten easier to work with, uh, thinner and more maneuverable, and it serves as better protection. So, uh, we're just trying to update that and make it as, as easy as we can on our firefighters. And then the last major item that I want to mention is our SCBA's, our air packs, the packs that we use to breathe. Uh, everything that we have now is fifteen to twenty years old. They're still current as far as functionality, but the new standards have changed and the technology has also changed. They'll be lighter, uh, they'll offer us more protection. There's also some electronics that are built into them now where our shift commanders at the command vehicle can monitor where our firefighters are at. So in the event of a collapse or if somebody gets hurt and, uh, is trapped, we have a better way to find them. So we're adding those and they're about twelve thousand dollars, ten to twelve thousand dollars apiece by the time we get everything put together for it. So we'll be replacing all of those. There are some other items on the card. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Our thermal imaging cameras, our, some of the cots that we use to put patients into the ambulances, we're replacing a lot of that as well. And then some capital improvements at stations, some remodeling and that kind of thing. But those are the largest items that we'll be buying out of this. Yes, ma'am?
You're going to construct a three-story state-of-the-art training tower. Where is that going to be constructed?
Our training center is located out, uh, on the west side of Blue Springs on Forty Highway, Forty Seven Fifteen, West Forty Highway. And what we're doing is the engineers are designing to where that training tower will actually go inside of part of our warehouse space. Uh, the two outside walls for the training tower will be outside walls of that training building. So it won't take up any more of the footprint. But then it'll go, the three stories will go through the roof, we'll be able to repel, do rescue training and that kind of thing. But it's all going out on that west side of Blue Springs in that, in our training facility.
Anyone else have any questions?
Thank you for your time.
Uh, next up, ordinances?
Yes, your honor, excuse me, first item is bill sixteen oh two, second reading. Will be ordinance two three eight zero. It is an ordinance approving the second amendment to the Green Valley Marketplace Tax Center and Financing Plan relating only to redevelopment Project Two and taking other actions related to it. Second reading, ordinance two three eight zero.
Um, I move that we accept bill B sixteen dash zero two, making it ordinance twenty three eighty.
I have motion Alderman West to approve bill B sixteen dash zero two for its second reading, making ordinance twenty three eighty. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Arnold. Any discussion?
Yeah, um, I was contacted by, um, Dennis Schott last week and he told me that sometime back that Dave Warby had made an offer to, um, pick up the, um, uh, money worth setting aside for financing of this tip right now. And, um, and I asked him to get with, you know, Dave and, and get more, because he didn't, he was just trying to bait on it. And then I spoke to Clayton tonight and they said they did make that offer a couple of months ago that they were willing to pick up the tip. And, and I'm just kind of curious why we never heard anything about the offer. Um, and that's fifty, sixty thousand dollars we're setting aside a, a year and, and an offer like that we made and nothing, nothing about it. Um, I hope this is going to matter. I'm also, I mean, I'm glad we're out on this if we still have time to, to compare their offer to what we have here.
No, um, first, the offer, that, that offer never occurred. Um, I've had a few discussions with David, uh, including with Paul of that town development committee meeting. The entire time that we've been working with STAR Development, David, uh, had commented a few times that, hey, if things don't work out with STAR, you know, maybe I'll learn from Frank and see what I can do. Uh, that was the extent of the conversation. There was never a commitment to pay tip amount, um, to the city. Had there been that sort of commitment, uh, I mean, I would expect, I, I don't even know what the context of this offer was. If it was just a passing, hey, I'll pick up the extra eighty-seven thousand. Um, I'm not really sure what, what the context of the conversation was, but I can, uh, look at you and certainly tell you that there's never been a huge need like that before. I would also just point out that we went through, I mean, everybody's had a, a chance to, uh, come into this process. We, we issued an RFP that was in the newspaper. Um, we got one response to that from STAR Development. There was a tip mission hearing that was unanimously supported by the, the tip mission. Uh, there was no opposition in that meeting and we had a first reading of this last week and there was no opposition. I too received calls back then, um, asking to table, uh, the ordinances. At this point, if the board of Alderman cables it, um, they will essentially, uh, correct the project that we have out there. The developers will disclose on that property within three days.
I, I think, yeah, the developer was interested. We should have received something during that time when we were requesting proposals. And to come at this point, it just puts us in a bad position where as much as we would like to support a local developer, we just can't because of, the, the, the horse is already too far through the race here to, to try and turn, turn the horse around. We've got to, it would set up really bad precedence and make it very difficult down the road if any other developer would want to come in here and we'd change minds this, this far down the stream. And I don't want to give that impression that we would do that. As much as I would like to support the local developer.
My, my concern was if that offer was made while we weren't, made, when made, um, so.
Yeah, there, there's actually an application process for the tip, so if the developer would have made that offer, even had it been made in passing, we've had lengthy discussions about tip projects in this developer over the last two months. Um, I certainly would have passed on the board.
Okay, anyone else? Anything additional?
Nope.
All fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Arnold?
Yeah.
Johnson?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Headley?
Yes.
Palacek?
Yes.
West?
Yeah.
unanimous. Next bill is sixteen zero three, second reading. Will be ordinance two three eight one. It is an ordinance approving the first amendment petition to establish the Green Valley Marketplace Community Improvement District. Ordinance two three eight one.
Move that we accept bill B sixteen dash zero three for its second reading, making it ordinance twenty three eighty one.
I have motion Alderman West to approve bill B sixteen dash zero three for its second reading, making it ordinance twenty three eighty one. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Arnold. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
West?
Yes.
Palacek?
Yes.
Headley?
Yes.
Stanley? Johnson? Arnold?
Yes.
Six zero, mayor. Bill B sixteen dash zero four, second reading. It will be ordinance two three eight two. And it is an ordinance approving petition for addition of property to the Green Valley Marketplace Community Improvement District. Second reading, ordinance two three eight two.
Mayor, I recommend we approve bill B sixteen dash zero four for its second reading, making it ordinance twenty three eighty two.
I have motion Alderman West to approve bill B sixteen dash zero four for its second reading, making it ordinance twenty three eighty two. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Arnold. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Headley?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Palacek?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Six zero, mayor. Resolution R sixteen dash sixteen, a resolution by the Board of Alderman City of Green Valley, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator purchase of John Deere nine ninety seven R zero turn commercial model. Resolution R sixteen dash sixteen.
May I move that we accept resolution under R sixteen dash sixteen as read?
I have motion Alderman Palacek to approve resolution R sixteen dash sixteen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero. Resolution R sixteen dash seventeen, a resolution by the Board of Alderman City of Green Valley, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with tax in town Missouri for distribution of combat funds at seventy-five thousand seven sixty-four to two thousand sixteen, this whole year. Resolution R sixteen dash seventeen.
Mayor, I move that we accept resolution sixteen dash seventeen as read.
I have motion Alderman Arnold to approve resolution R sixteen dash seventeen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Stanley. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, just quickly to recap, um, this is just, uh, a resolution approving that we accept combat funding, uh, from the combat, combat tax. Um, if you have any specific questions about it, you can have the chief, but it supports, uh, the things like there, those, those sort of initiatives, the combat, um, marketplace.
Okay, anyone have anything additional? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero, mayor. My, this resolution R sixteen dash eighteen is a resolution by the Board of Alderman City of Green Valley, Missouri, approving a three-year cooperative during the city and Green Valley Economic Development Corporation. Resolution R sixteen dash eighteen.
May I move that we accept resolution R sixteen dash eighteen as read?
I have motion Alderman West to approve resolution R sixteen dash eighteen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is a new agreement that the city will be entering into with the Green Valley Economic Development, uh, Corporation. Back in, I would say, right, two thousand six, um, two thousand seven, the record isn't real there, but the mayor appointed a task force to put together, uh, an EDC for Green Valley. And the hope and the desire was that, um, through this organization, we would be able to deal with developers and develop the city without them having to come directly to the, to the city. And it would be a third party to be able to, to help facilitate negotiations. Um, back in April of two thousand eight, the, uh, EDC, Green Valley Economic Development Corporation was formed as five oh one C three. Um, it, uh, had struggled for some years, hit some funding and get up off of the ground, but it did. Uh, actually, last year, we got the, uh, five oh one C three tax economic status reinstated after it collapsed. And through a, uh, uh, strong initiative, from the EDC, we were able to raise funds, um, and recruit for a second director for that organization. Been a lot of work that's gone into this. Um, at budget time, we discussed in a budget hearing that the city would donate or contribute thirty-five thousand dollars to the EDC, uh, to help get them up and off the ground as, as a, uh, annual, uh, funding agreement. EDC has offered five thousand dollars per year, as well as the Green Valley School District has offered five thousand dollars a year to support it. Um, we have, uh, received some additional private investment. Um, with that, the, uh, selection panel, uh, went through, uh, for a better part of about eight months resumes to find the applicant that we wanted. And, uh, Mr. Rob Harrington, which is sitting right up here in the office, uh, he was selected by the group. We bought him down here a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, took him around, introduced him to stakeholders, investors, showed him around Green Valley. And ultimately, the board directors decided to offer Mr. Harrington the job, picked him on the funding between city. So, uh, to try and wrap up my long story that was supposed to be short, uh, this is the agreement that will govern that relationship between the EDC and, uh, the city. I would like to thank Alderman West. She is, uh, the president at all meetings, been very helpful as vice president. And we started this initiative out, uh, over a year ago. It didn't seem like we would ever get to the point where we would have funds and, and actual compensation and corporation, but, uh, here we are. So, have any questions?
We have any questions? Right? Seeing none, then all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero, mayor. That's all other ordinances.
Next up, see attorney's report?
Nothing to report, your honor. Thank you.
Next up, see administrator's staff report?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, the chief, uh, Sarvok was actually out this afternoon. He started a private meeting because he was attending General Berthardt's, had your father. So he's actually hearing this for the first time, but I would like Chief Sarvok to explain the actual shooting scenario and just how that went.
Yeah, so it was, uh, the week before last, we were, uh, very fortunate that the theater here in Green Valley, uh, the B and B, uh, organization, we had approached that several months ago. First of all, we started because of unfortunately events around the country. We talked to the management up there. They were very receptive. And, uh, we have, uh, officers that appear and went up and trained all of the staff at the theater. Our relationship to the horrible events, some type of shooting event, and what, uh, to the second police response. And then, uh, more recently, because of events in the, uh, our police officers, uh, hated. We were doing a lot of, uh, active shooter training and while a lot of officers had had training and role playing in schools and warehouses and those, we, uh, we approached the theater set. We were very receptive and they made the theater available and you recall, it was the last, that last night, uh, already. Uh, we were there two nights from about ten until the morning. We had, uh, Green Valley officers, Buckner, and Old Grove, and that contingent from, uh, CJC M V, uh, to, uh, to simulate and let the officers come in and handle it. We had a couple of scenarios that they go in and handled. It was excellent, real good, uh, one of the first times that we remember, uh, interaction on a role playing, carrying the exercise with police and fire EMS, and that was particularly, those, those were, had a lot of challenges. And, uh, it was fair and beneficial, got a lot of positive comments, had a lot of support, a lot of citizens and tips and, uh, people came in and, uh, were role players, uh, in the theater. The officer wore a blonde and we, uh, had a little, we interrupted you, but we don't, uh, we don't, uh, unfortunately happens. We will actually, uh, we recognize you, uh, the marketplace here and B and B, uh, and all of you.
Uh, yeah, I wanted to provide the board with an update on our, um, on our, uh, pursuit of, of making this community more walkable, um, and with our trails and our trails master plan. Um, there was a, a funding opportunity through the Mid American Regional Council here recently. Uh, this funding program is Transportation Alternatives Program called TAP. And, um, it, it funds projects not only us new streets and roadways, but also trails and so, so. Uh, we just recently submitted an application, um, for a trails-related project. And this particular project is eighty twenty, uh, when it comes to, uh, to the match. So eighty percent of the project cost awarded from Mark to us and then twenty percent would be what the city would, would have to, to pay for. Uh, this particular project, um, we would be looking at trying to acquire funding or get awarded funding in the amount of a hundred nineteen thousand two hundred and ten. And the city's portion or match would be twenty-nine thousand nine hundred, making it, uh, a hundred and forty-nine thousand one hundred and ten for a total project cost. The project itself is probably the most critical piece in our trails master plan as far as connectivity. Um, and specifically, it is the Cross Creek Park, uh, it's the, the nature park there, the undeveloped park along Blue Branch Creek. Um, right now, the Star Farms Neighborhood, which is the biggest neighborhood in the city of Green Valley, um, for pedestrians to gain access to the other side of Blue Branch Creek, they have to take Snibar Boulevard to Southwest Eagles Parkway and in, or to Buckner Targany Road and in. And as you all know, that, those routes does not continue a sidewalk. A lot of that walking would be on, on the shoulder. Uh, albeit, we do know that we have some kids that cross the creek to access the park. Um, but right now, that is only the only, um, way that people can get, um, from that neighborhood in town. And so this project would in essence fund a pedestrian bridge over Blue Branch Creek. Um, and it would gain access to those people living in those communities or in those neighborhoods to park, to the high school, to the Snibar Elementary, to the, uh, the businesses, um, along Southwest Eagles Parkway and, and in essence, all the way to through the downtown corridor. So it really is a critical piece because it connects people to places they go daily, uh, locations of interest, which is your neighborhoods, your parks, your schools and your businesses. So, um, this is a, a, a big, big piece for us and we're hoping that, um, uh, we, we can receive some funding for, for that endeavor and, and get that project rolling. Uh, through this, uh, funding opportunity, there's three million dollars available in four Missouri. Um, so we're, we're hoping to capture some of that and probably be August or September, uh, before we're notified if we are in fact awarded any funding. So I would definitely keep, I, you all apprised as, as we, uh, approach that timeframe. Any questions, Mr. David?
Just wanted to, uh, I just have one thing I want to report, you know, the, the monthly report on city operations. The next one starts providing that, uh, as a hard copy to the board in board meetings, which is a piece of the public record and everybody can see exactly, uh, what we're working on throughout the year. So, this report on all cities and the city of Conover, but it's just our report on operations in February. Um, the next report will be out by, by Friday, uh, uh, April.
The morning's report will be out by Friday. I have no other questions.
Next up, support of Alderman reports and comments. Alderman Palacek?
Yeah, I was asked, um, to mention that the Green Valley Eagles baseball team, um, will be participating in the day of service. Um, what they do is, so if there's anybody in the community that needs any sort of assistance as far as, um, I think if they're, you know, picking up trash or maybe helping a little bit with some elderly people who, you know, have maintenance issues on their home, um, but they're really, uh, there's, I guess it's a pretty good program and they kept them pretty busy that last year and so they're looking to, uh, to, uh, find some people that are in, in, in need of, in need of this. So, um, I've got a form and I actually posted it on, um, I think the residence page. So if people are interested, they could actually go on that and print out that form, but it's the day of service and it's on Saturday the ninth from nine AM to one. So if you know anybody who could use this, um, let, let them know.
Alderman Arnold?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Headley?
Uh, just one thing, um, Mr. Murphy, you made a comment to me prior to the meeting on something we discussed a few weeks ago, maybe a month ago, concerning the, the, the area of Buckner Targany up north here where it pinches down to one lane. Can you talk to that a little bit?
Yeah, residents did make, uh, a comment that, 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 uh, actively looking at a solution for. Basically, you remember the problem is we, we have two lanes going up there and then right after the light, um, kind of at lane ends. So they, people are kind of racing up there and then trying to cut over at the last minute. So it's a concern that Alderman Headley had brought up, um, so they are actually looking at different ways we can find or create a, a divide there where that can't happen.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alderman West?
I'm nothing at this time, yeah.
Alderman Johnson?
Uh, um, I was noticing on Facebook tomorrow at, uh, Swan Lake, um, Terminal Dallas, probably, uh, um, Vietnam Memorial. Um, it's, uh, anniversary of signing of the, um, aerospace toward the end of Vietnam Memorial in, in forty nine years, um, time in the west way. Um, but, uh, anyhow, they're holding that tomorrow at eleven o'clock up at, uh, um, Swan Lake.
Alderman Stanley?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, uh, mayor's report. Uh, I just have one thing. Uh, Jim, I don't know how familiar you are with this, but Ken and others can. I know Ken's a little familiar, he's emailed about, but regarding Creekside Village up there, there's some issues between the apartment complex and the HOA regarding-
But regarding Creekside Village up there, there's some issues between the apartment complex and the HOA regarding property and such. Uh, the two biggest are the apartment building dumpster is on, apartment building. The apartment building owns the property. It's on, but the only access to the dumpster is through an alley. And we're not really for sure. The HOA thinks they own the alley, but we can't really tell who owns the alley. The other concern is the HOA had bought the pool and the clubhouse. And when they bought the pool and the clubhouse, they bought some of the parking that went with the pool and the clubhouse. In the process of doing that, I think it lowered the amount of parking that the apartment complex has. Now, Ken and I talked, we figured they're probably grandfathered in on having adequate spots. But I think apartment complex residents are parking in parking spots owned by the HOA's house. So if I can get you the attorney's information, can you give them a call and try to see if we can figure it out? I mean, it's, I mean, what happened, what happened was when the developer declared make up, I think, originally, it was all one parcel and everybody had used the clubhouse and pool. But I think when, like, someone suffered by the apartment complex and HOA went separate and, so I think that's where the issue resides. And, okay, I'll get that to you then, but I just wanted to let you know that we've been spending a lot of time on that, so. Uh, that's all I have. I believe we have the need for executive session for which items?
Um, for, uh, personnel and for real estate.
Okay, we're going with personnel. Oh, and it's entertaining a motion that's adjourned in the next session?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Legal, uh, personnel and real estate.
Real estate, okay. So not just the real estate.
Okay, entertaining a motion that's adjourned in the next session?
Sure.
Motion, Alvin Arnold. Do I have a second? Second, Alvin West. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Alvin Palacek? Alvin Arnold?
Yes.
Alvin Headley?
Yes.
Alvin West?
Yes.
Alvin Johnson?
Yes.
Alvin Stanley?
Yes.
All right, we're adjourned in the next session.